Thank you for coming out tonight to our first meeting for September. I just have a few items here. I just want to mention a start to the school year. I want to give thank yous. Thank yous to our custodial staff, our maintenance staff, our ground staff. They did a wonderful job getting our buildings together. Absolutely phenomenal. I also want to thank our teachers. Teachers got their rooms ready, the hallways, the bulletin boards. If you take a walk through the buildings, they just look alive. So, thank you to them. I'd like to thank our administrators for all the work that they did to get us ready. And obviously thanking my directors in the Board of Education throughout the summer, making sure that we were ready to go as a school district. So it was a very good opening to the school year. I'd also like to take a second to welcome our new student reps. In just a few minutes, we are going to do the official swearing in. And then our student reps will be here for all 10 months of the school year, reporting out about the happenings in the high schools and around our district. I want to point out a couple of things to the public. Out in front here at the front table, we have our new district infographics. So if you haven't gotten a copy of that, on the front side are a lot of the great things that are happening in our school district. On the backside are all the colleges and universities and careers that our students are going to outside of college. So take a look at that. It also includes participation rates in athletics and extracurricular. And what you'll find is that our students are involved in a lot of things. And when they graduate, they're going to a lot of great colleges and universities. And they're also going out into a lot of great places in the workforce. So we're very happy for our graduates and very excited about the coming school year. The other handout that's out there is our second annual tech night. And that's going to happen on November 21st. Last year, we had a very exciting tech night where our students and staff came together and demonstrated how we use technology in our schools. This year, we will do the same, but we've expanded it. So we will have virtual reality. We'll also have esports demonstrations. We'll also have our robotics teams demonstrating and our Lego League teams demonstrating. So there'll be a lot of demonstration, a lot of conversation, and a lot of things going on that night about technologies. That is November 21st at Rocket. And there's a flyer up front for anybody? Another thing I want to let you know is that there is a new presentation series called the Thought Leadership Series. And it's through the Garden State Coalition of Schools, which we belong to. And they are actually going to kick the series off, the very first presentation in Hamilton Township on November 13th. We'll be identifying a school in the next couple of days, but it's a presentation with Dr. Katherine Steiner Adair. And it's titled "The Big Disconnect: Protecting Childhood and Family Relationships in the Digital Age." And this is going to be a presentation open for all families in Hamilton Township Public Schools. So it's very exciting that we are actually the first district to get this series, this presentation. This presenter will also speak to our high school students from all three schools during the day on that day of the presentation. So she'll go to one of the schools, and we'll bring some of our students over to listen to her present. Finally, a lot of great things that I'm talking about here. I do want to unfortunately close on an issue that we had today at Grace Middle School. And so Grace was supposed to have its dance today, but we postponed it at the last minute due to what I'll term an inappropriate conversation through social media among students. However, one student who heard students talking about that did the right thing. See something, say something. We preach this to our kids. We preach this to our community. There was never any danger, and the police have investigated. There is no danger to Grace at all. However, the timing of the situation being brought to our attention required us to postpone it. Mr. Inosensi is here, and I'd like to thank him and his staff for the hard work that they did and the quick communication that they had out in the community and the willingness to reschedule that dance in the very near future for the students. So if there's anybody from Grace, the very near future, you will have your dance. And that concludes my report. Oh, one last thing, sorry. Also during presentation time with the board, we will have a presentation from Mr. O'Boyle on our esports program. And that does conclude. Thank you.
Next, we're going to have the swearing in of our board reps. So let's start with Samantha from Hamilton High. Patrick, you don't want to time Patrick?
No, we can do all of them.
So we have Samantha Louie from Steiner. I mean, not again, I'm sorry. Christopher from Hamilton.
I state your name.
I am Christopher Berger.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And that I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith?
And allegiance to the state?
And allegiance to the state?
And to the governments established in the United States and this state?
To the governments established in the United States and this state?
Under the authority of the people so help me God?
Under the authority of the people so help me God?
I state your name.
I am Christopher Berger.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by the bylaws of the Board of Education of Hamilton Township?
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by the bylaws of the Board of Education of Hamilton Township?
For the office of student representatives of the Board of Education?
For the office of student representatives of the Board of Education?
I will faithfully?
I will faithfully?
And partially and bestly perform?
And partially and bestly perform?
All the duties of that office?
All the duties of that office?
According to the best of my ability so help me God?
According to the best of my ability so help me God?
Congratulations.
So with that, we're going to have you do your first board report. So we'll go with Samantha from Hamilton High.
Hi, my name is Samantha Magia, and I'm from Hamilton High West. For today's report, we have our homecoming on Friday, meaning we have float decorating right after school. And then we have our dance from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. The following morning, we have our homecoming game, which is against Princeton, Hamilton High West versus Princeton, which we have our homecoming court come out, and also we have the float decorations to see who did the best float. And clubs such as Student Government, National Honor Society, Key Club, all the clubs that are a part of the school have floats. I would also like to mention that we have our college fair coming up October 8th at Hamilton High West at 6:00. To help us explain to the parents and students who, you know, first generations, to explain FASPA and all scholarships and aids available for grants. We also have our haunted house coming up in October and academic awards as well. And the last thing I would want to close out with is the attendance push. We've had, in the previous years, we've had bad attendance, like it's known in Hamilton. And we've been really pushing for that, and so far, we've been doing a really good job.
Good job. Thank you. Okay, next, we have Louis Paschule.
Here. Salutations fellow board members. My name is Louis Paschule, and I'm the student board representative for Nottingham High School. Although it's still very early in the 2019-2020 school year, everything is going as planned thus far. As for regular back-to-school procedures, grade level assemblies have already taken place. These important assemblies put emphasis on specific tasks to be completed by students, ranging from ninth to 12th grade, and serve as a reminder of just how fast high school flies by. Back-to-school night was another great success, as it gave Nottingham parents a chance to meet all of their children's teachers, as well as Nottingham students, to advocate the various clubs and sports that they participated in. Moving to the sports world at Nottingham, we are proud to say that we have won the yearly rivalry game against Steiner High School. Sorry, Chris. But this game means more to Hamilton than just the final score. It was fantastic to see the stands filled with students who were full of spirit for their respective school. The game was played in a respectful manner by both teams, and ultimately, it was a game that benefited the Hamilton Township area as a whole. It is also the first NHS-SHS football game in 29 years that didn't feature head coach John Adams. After his extensive coaching career with Nottingham, he took on a role that was previously vacant, a D position at Nottingham, and the transition has gone very smoothly. Additionally, Nottingham is welcoming a brand-new gym floor, and anyone who has stepped foot in the gym knows that that was a much-needed addition. This will surely help the NHS State Championship-winning basketball team. Looking to the future at Nottingham, spirit read is coming up, and following that is the homecoming dance. Us North Stars have an immense amount of school spirit, and I'm looking forward to see the entire school dressed up according to whatever crazy theme we have planned. After that, the students have the homecoming dance to look forward to, and it always seems to be a blast every year. The NHS talent show is coming up soon, and practices have already started. Last, but most certainly not least, Nottingham is happy to welcome a new addition to the list of clubs we offer. A newly-formed chess club is present at Nottingham, and I'm proud to say that I'm a co-founder. We are very excited about the opportunity we have created to include students in learning and playing a game in which people of all skill levels can have fun playing. Hopefully it hasn't bored you on the first meeting accident, but look forward to reporting all of the positives Nottingham High School has to offer.
All right, my name is Chris Berger. I'm from Steiner High School. So obviously, school just started, but we already have a lot to talk about. So starting off this year, we wanted to emphasize our Steiner Pride core values. And if you don't know what that is, it is basically an acronym, PRIDE. So positive, responsible, involved, determined, empathetic. And those are qualities we want to ensure in all of our students. We've seen a great success. We had back-to-school nights. We had a very early homecoming this year. We had our homecoming dance on the 20th. We sold over 700 tickets, so it was a huge success. And we had our homecoming game on the 21st, where we crowned our homecoming king, Chris Nitti, and homecoming queen, Lauren Sartor. Clubs and sports have all started up, which has been tremendously successful. And coming up is something I'm personally excited for as a part of the marching band. We're having our marching band's music and motion competition next Saturday, October 5th at 12:00 p.m. And it's really awesome because all three Hamilton High Schools will be there. So I encourage everybody to check that out. We will be having our National Honor Society induction next Thursday at 7:00. So, yeah.
So next, we have the esports presentation. Oh, I'm sorry. We have, sorry, I skipped the recognition of the Hamilton Education Foundation 2019-20 school year grant winners. Sorry about that. How could I forget that?
Dr. Rocco, Board President Lombardo, and members of the Hamilton Township Board of Education. It is my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Debbie Von Gaunt, Board President of the Hamilton Educational Foundation. She will be presenting our 2019-2020 grant recipients this evening. Please welcome.
Thank you so much. And Diana has also joined me today, and Diana is also involved. She's from the YMCA, but also on our board. So thank you so much for helping me with this. I wanted to say congratulations to all of the grant winners. Every year, it's very exciting to see these innovative ideas that really support the children, and we're so proud to be able to support those ideas by giving grant money back to them. This year, we have 18 winners, which total over $17,000. So we upped it a little bit this year because it was just too harsh to say no. So, okay. So I'm going to be calling each one up, and then we'll be handing out the certificates. And we ask that you stay up here because we're going to have a photo op at the end. So I know some people couldn't make it tonight, but I still would like to call their names and call them out. We have them up on the screen as well, so if you'd like to see what the grant was about, you can take a look at that as well. The first recipient is Jessica Namer. We have Suzanne McManaman. Mark Laurenti and Amanda Deal. Melissa Bruchelli. Kimberly Shaper and Morgan Mara. Congratulations. Next, we have Ruth Quills. Then we have Phil Leonardo. Wendy Ballant. Jessica Ikorn. Next, we have Michelle Gigliotti. We have Jennifer Barker. And we have four teachers that have come together to submit a grant, which is Ann Wilmot, Erin Liu, Dottie DePalma, and Jo Smith. Next, we have Julie Boyle and Marianna Garlisi. Then we have Robin Ivanisic. And then we have Jenny Splendurio. Melissa Clark and Lauren Aldisari. Suzanne McManaman. And the last is Teresa Collins and Donna Triglia. I want to congratulate all the grant winners, and please keep in mind, share with all of your colleagues out there that these grants are available every year. So we really encourage everyone to apply for them. We're so happy to support it. Thank you.
So before you go anywhere, don't go. Award recipients, we do have cookies and water for anybody in the audience tonight because we're celebrating awards. We're celebrating our new students. So please, help yourself before you walk out the door.
Do we need to light them?
If you guys can see it, it's a lot of presentation there. I think you better write. Good evening, Board of Ed. It's Dr. Rocco from Hamilton Community. I'm very excited to talk a little bit about what we're doing in Hamilton in our high schools right now with the esports program. So we'll just go right into the presentation. I'll show you. So what is esports? Or what are esports? The long and short is esports are organized gaming for, they have them at middle school, high school, professional level, collegiate level. And it is just organizing different types of video games in a very collective manner for students and professionals. What I have is a real quick video to show you guys. Audio should be good. I tested it before, just to give you a glimpse into what esports is.
The esports industry is booming. Experts say that the industry will exceed $1 billion in 2019. But do you truly understand the phenomenon that has millions of fans worldwide glued to their screens? Brands such as Coca-Cola, Visa, Intel, and Comcast Xfinity signing on as sponsors for esports leagues, and investors who are salivating at the investment possibilities? Let's start by explaining what esports really is, some of the leagues that make up the industry, and more. Esports is competitive video gaming where teams or individuals play against each other for prize money in front of millions of viewers watching online and in physical arenas. And professional esports players can make some serious dough from it. Epic Games' Fortnite leads the global esports market in terms of prize money with a $100 million cash prize. Some other big names in the esports space include Riot Games' League of Legends and Activision Blizzard's Overwatch. Over 450 million people watch an esports event in 2019, and over 200 million of those viewers will be esports enthusiasts. The esports market is on track for additional growth in the coming years as it continues to attract more gamers. Esports will reach nearly $2 billion by 2022. The esports industry clearly continues to show signs of growth, and players in esports aren't the only people who can make some serious cash from this sector. Investing in esports companies, or even companies that have a footprint in esports, could make investors a pretty penny.
So that's just a quick, like, from the industry side of what esports is, but more importantly, I just want to talk a little bit about the numbers of how big this is right now. They were talking about the 200 million viewers and the dollar amounts that are associated with this. They're anticipating by 2020 that 589 million people will be live streaming some platform of esports. And it's small in there, but down at the bottom, they say 11% of every viewing hour on YouTube and Twitch right now is some sort of esports on. Which, if you think about all the content that's on YouTube right now, the fact that 11% of that is it, it's a huge number. Different careers in esports. So the obvious one is the professional player, that is someone who is playing one of those video games and being paid or sponsored to do it. One of my favorite ones is the second one on the list there. There's a job called shoutcaster. What a shoutcaster does is they basically are a hype man for the person who is playing the game, and they talk over the person as they're streaming and get crowds excited about what's going on in the game. It's like having an announcer at the game. They have different types of coaches and analysts, obviously team managers, content creators. You can be in marketing, you can be in production. They have a lot more on there. I have the slide shared out with you guys, too. If you want to click them anymore, they give you descriptions of what each one of them are. How is this local to us as well? They've already committed a $50 million esports arena in Philadelphia, right outside the Xfinity Center. So this is supposed to be opening up sometime in 2021, specifically for professional gaming. And colleges and universities are huge in this right now. So I should have made this a little bigger for you. So 20% of colleges and universities are already offering scholarships, and there's a large percentage more that have started considering doing this. There's, at the bottom, we have top prize money for different professional sports. So it's a little small in there, but they have the international, that is one of the gaming competitions they have. The single top prize money for that is $25.5 million a year. So in comparison to the FIFA championship, the NBA championship, and the Masters, which are all 20, $13 million, $11 million, that's the top prize money. Then the next two down from there are League of Legends and Fortnite, again, more esports competitions. I don't know if you're following any of that's happened recently. They just had a student in Pennsylvania, 16 years old, won $3 million at a Fortnite competition. Educational benefits. So aside from the communication and the collaboration portion of this, we reached out to a couple of school districts that have been doing this already. There's a district out in Texas that's, they were kind of right at the cusp when it started becoming a thing, so they've had it for two years now. They said 70% of their students involved in esports have no other extracurricular activity before this. So this is giving them an opportunity to get involved in their school, where normally they would just, they'd show up from the time the bell rings, and then they leave when the bell rings, and now they have a reason to be at school. I would imagine that also also bear attendance, but I don't have the numbers behind that. And they said 10% of those students involved are also special education students. At the bottom, we also have, it's a big social-emotional learning opportunity for these students because they learn how to communicate with people in a positive way, and then they also learn how to deal with more frustrating times when you're playing some of these games. What we have is one more quick video on what esports does in the brain a little bit for it.
My name is Constance Steincooler. I'm a full professor here in informatics, and I study games. My expertise is on social interaction and cognition. My game of choice tends to be player versus player, kind of online games. I'm really interested in all of the social interaction and social sort of collaboration and competition that happens in games and then around the games. And we have a lot of different faculty here who are actually working on game-related topics. The connection between esports and STEM, between esports and academics generally. Gaming is a very cerebral and smart kind of activity. In their game spaces, they're doing like really high-end theory crafting, they're doing data science. It's a ton of delayed gratification. And if you're going to get good at any of the games, it takes a lot of work. It takes hours of discipline, of play. And so the idea that they're kind of barren intellectually is sort of a foolish idea the moment you pick up a title. It takes screen time, and it turns it into activity time. In today's kind of climate, we really underestimate how important it is just to play and to do things because they're interesting and fun. It's actually an important part of development.
So we have currently, that's esports as a whole. Where are we at with Hamilton? The first slide that I had on here for you guys, this is actually a picture of Stein's Media Center right now with our new gaming machines in there. They're not used just for gaming. They're high-end desktops that can be used during the school day as well. And then we're looking to join the HSEL, which is the High School Esports League. They consist of seven different games, and they currently have 35 other schools in New Jersey who are participating in it. It's a two-season sport or activity in this case. It's eight weeks and then two weeks with playoffs, and then another eight weeks and two weeks in playoffs for the fall and for the spring. And then the top competitors get invited to a summer invitational. And at the summer invitational, they have live college scouts that are actively handing out scholarships to students. Next steps for us. So I have just a quick screenshot of the permission slip on there, but we already have the equipment in place for six of the seven games. The seventh, which would be Nintendo's Super Smash Brothers, the students would be supplying their own devices for it if they wanted to participate in it. We're looking to start recruiting the esports team with students, where we've already seen a large interest from the surveys we sent out last year, and recruit an esports team advisor to be running it for each one of the high schools. And then having the permission slip signed off after that. I know I threw a lot of information about esports. If you guys aren't familiar at it, I just wanted to leave some time for any questions.
Can you just add the part about Dr. Rocco's school stuff? About what happens if they wander off, and how the game can be shut down?
They destroy the game.
Yeah, so in the HSEL that we're joining, every game is managed by, they have, it's similar to having a proctor over the game. So they, depending on how the school districts do it, when you're doing it in school, you usually have your team advisor who is managing everything that's going on. You'll have some sort of communication device, whether they're over the mics or them texting each other, typing to each other. But it's proctored by the esports advisor while it's at school. And then for the actual competitions through HSEL, they have officials there, just like you'd have a referee at a game. So if there's any inappropriate content, they're removed from the game.
So for them to compete against other schools, they wouldn't have to be online, like they wouldn't have to travel to the other schools? Would it be all, is it all online, like over?
Correct. It would all be done online, so they would always be going to the media center of their school and using the devices that are there.
Okay, and are they on all three high schools?
All three high schools have them.
That's not middle schools yet?
Not the middle schools, it's just the high schools.
How many seats do we have?
We have six stations set up at each building right now, and that's because the game that requires the most, which is Overwatch, is a six-player game, so we made sure to have it set up that we could have the most amount for any one of the games to be played.
What size are those?
Ah, they are 20, you know, 24s or 27s.
So, probably play from that side. If we want to play them.
Yeah.
We might start with the.
We'll be here.
We'll be one.
What on the team?
And the screen.
Yeah, so one other point on that with the amount of students, so that is just one game that's going on. The way that the league structures is they have a different game every day of the week at 5 o'clock. So Monday might be Overwatch, Tuesday might be League of Legends. So the esports team isn't going to be just six for Overwatch, you'll likely have six and then six backups, have like a first string, second string type situation. So the club itself is likely going to have a large number of students that are doing this, because you need first string, second string for each one of the games that are being played.
My next question, how many could accommodate us? The number of stations? Plus, like you have a, if it's just a Lions sports team, you have a freshman JV and a more senior team, this way you have a first team, second team, third team, something like that.
Correct, so for a game like Overwatch that has six players, we might be accommodating 18, where you'd have three separate groups that we're able to play.
And we have a viewing station, tip, so there's a large monitor above all the gaming consoles where kids can sit back and watch what's happening.
Anybody in the community have a question? Oh, fine, sorry.
Who approves the games that are chosen for our district?
So, since we're joining the HSEL, they limit their selection to seven games that are being played, and then from then, we have the permission slip that happens.
Is it approved by the Department of Ed, or is it done by Overwatch, you know, through the district? I mean, who approves what games go that we're going to be competing in?
So on the, on, so we sign up for the league, the league will say these seven games are eligible to be played with, played for in your school, and then the permission slip to the parents identifies saying that they give permission that their kids can participate in these games, plus some of these games are marked mature. Parent has to sign off that they're giving permission for their child to play the game that's marked mature. So that's, the decision comes from the sanctioning organization of what the games are that are played.
If somebody doesn't agree with one particular game, is it, is it gonna come back on the board or the district saying that I feel that it's inappropriate for my child even though they're not involved?
They don't have to play, they don't have, they don't have to participate, and they sign off on a permission slip granting approval of what they can and can't do.
But is it appropriate for, you know, is the board, the board's gonna approve this, or we already have, but I'm just more concerned about what games are being put on there?
So you're going, that's why in October, there's going to be an approval. So this is not an approval tonight, this is a presentation and conversation, but there'll be approval for the league next month, and so we can give you the list of the games that are the seven that are.
And we'll have time to.
Yeah, you can have that tomorrow.
We'll have time to, we'll. On the presentation itself, it has the seven games listed that are on there, and.
You have that here.
I know, it's not where it is right now, but if you go to the HSEL's website, they have everyone listed on there, they break it down.
Can you give us a hard copy of that?
Yeah.
And we're gonna post it on the website, tip, we'll put that up.
Yes, and actually, he raises an interesting question. Has the Department of Education or NJAA taken a position on it?
So I know the, was it NJSIAA has been approached about it before, they haven't set anything saying that they are going to do it, but I believe with the growth that you're seeing in it, and the fact that colleges are offering scholarships on it already, it's probably a matter of time before it gets recognized.
Mr. Lamar, I, just, since we're discussing this, I will tell you some of the questions that I submitted. One was, my first question was, is are we gonna have athletic trainers? Because, you know, we're gonna have kids, yeah, exactly, exactly. And essentially, the, this is a club which is different from our athletic programs, for a club. So it doesn't fall under all the athletic policies that we have, it just operates like a club. So that was one of my questions. And, and Mr. O'Boyle did say, and it was the coaches, right, that you said, we'll make sure that the kids get up, walk around, that they talk about.
The team advisors, yeah, and that's something we have a discussion with all three advisors when they were selected, to say, make sure that the students are thinking healthy while they're doing this as well, you don't want them sitting there for hours upon hours. Get up, walk around, get some legs, you know, leg stretches.
And how long average school hours is it gonna be, an hour?
From five to six after schools.
And are we, buses? No buses?
Just like any other club or activity after school.
Can you tell me how many of those games are shooting games?
Ah, yes, so they have on there, CS:GO and Rainbow Six, probably the main shooting games that you have on there. All the other ones are, if there's shooting involved, it's more like an animated, it's not a, an active, you know, like person.
Are they shooting, like hunting people in either one of those games?
Well, CS:GO and Rainbow Six, yeah.
And we think that's very smart to promote?
That's why we have the permission slips for the ones that are marked mature.
Permission slip or not, with the current climate, I mean, what's going on in the country, to offer a club that promotes a game that shoots at people?
So, so the concept is, first of all, we're entering into esports because of benefits for, for the students. I'm gonna answer your question, I'm not gonna go around it, right, so that's number one. Number two, as we enter into it, we're going to make a determination of which games we're gonna involve ourselves in and which games we're not. But step one is to allow the parents the opportunity to make a conscious decision as a parent, you're getting a permission slip, it's very clear, you'll have a link to it on the website, and then we're going to decide what games we are going to participate in and not participate in. These are the seven that are part of this group, right? So not putting that out to you and taking them off would be disingenuous, right? So we're, we're giving you what the total number are and what they are, so that we can make a determination. As I said to the board, there is no vote tonight. This is a presentation to the community, this is a presentation to the board, the board will then have a discussion about it leading up to a vote into the league, and the board can decide that these are appropriate and these are not appropriate. It will be a board decision to do that, but at the same time, the parent has to have a role in this and say, one, I'm letting my kids engage in video games even though they're doing it at home, like my own, for hours on end, but allowing them an opportunity to make a decision, two, yes I do or don't want my child to be involved in something like this. So there are, those are the conversations that we're having. That's why it's a September presentation, that's why we're not participating in the fall competitions, right? We said no to that, because we want to make sure that we have a conversation about this.
When's it start, the spring?
So the competition would be in the spring, and in the winter, they'd have an opportunity to use the consoles and practice through the league, right?
Dr. Rocco, can I just clarify something? The league has those seven games.
Correct.
We as a district haven't decided, A, if we want to be a part of that league, and B, if we're a part of it, we can pick and choose what games we want for our district.
So, let me just say, as a parent of a child who has already signed up for this, I'm 100% behind it, however, those two games should not be included, promoted at all. I don't even think, as a school district, as a town, we should have anything with Hamilton affiliated with any kind of shooting game.
I think that's why Mr. Kanka says, can we, 'cause I don't know, I don't know anything about.
All the other games are great, there's tons of games, driving games, sports games, ton, puzzle games, tons of games they could play.
They're absolutely right.
We don't need it, we don't, don't need it.
But that's why we're presenting it in public and.
Well, all right, but I'm just, as a parent, as a taxpayer, as a child who wants to be involved in it.
That's why we're asking.
Bad idea.
Ms. Thornton, before that, with these permission, these are already announced, or students are signed up for it?
No.
Okay.
We just have a template of it right now.
Ms. Thornton?
So, just as a question, so I just see the template of the permission slip, and you say that parents will have the option to choose whether or not, or what your children are participating in. Is there, where can the parents see a preview of each game so that they can make that decision, or that they can see the content to be able to make an informed decision?
We can do that together, that's easy.
And can we as a board get that as well?
Absolutely. I guess I shouldn't. Okay. So we'll have a follow-up, big discussion next month before we even vote.
Correct, correct.
In the meantime, we'll get more information.
As we said, this is the introduction, so people can begin to talk about it, so that we can make an informed decision, get the feedback from the board, get the feedback of the community, right? So that's the point of this. But overall, in general, it's a great opportunity for our kids.
That's right.
I have to agree, though, the shooting games are.
Yeah, but that's why we're bringing everything.
They shouldn't even be considered.
I know that we're voting on this in October, could we possibly talk about having a parents' night at each of the high schools, so that, you know, they don't, parents get more information, not just permission slip at home, so that they can ask the questions as well, if they can't possibly make a board meeting in October?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Is there, is there, if we don't pass this in October, does that mean we won't have time to?
No, so I think there would still be time, we just want to make sure that.
So we can do it in November if we had to?
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's more of a, the earlier that we get it established, the easier it'll be to start getting all the, everything in place for the spring league, and identifying which games are gonna be played, making sure we're signed up, and so.
And when does the spring league start?
It's, yeah, it's early February and January.
We can get more information on that, and then we're gonna hold the questions till the, for the first, here in the public, we'll get the rest of them then, just so we can get the board's committee reports done, and then we'll move on to the next. Next, you'll be the first one up. Board committee report, so we have the finance committee, Mr. Kanka.
The finance committee. Actually, we met twice. We met for an initiative meeting on the 4th of September, and the main focus of that meeting was the referendum and all the building projects that went on through the summer. We had a long, long discussion on windows and doors in multiple schools such as Rinald, Robinson West, and Clarkner. We spoke briefly about the ceiling work that went on at the Science School, and there was a couple of questions that were brought up about vestibule work, and some of the preliminary work was done, such as footings and foundations were put in, and materials are in route for that work as we speak. And that work is scheduled to be completed sometime in the middle of October, I believe. Yes. There were some delays on shipping for the vestibules in the schools. The original shipment was September, that has now been pushed back to sometime, I guess, I believe in October. So the scheduled work that was supposed to be completed on the 14th of October may be pushed back slightly, until the materials come in for the vestibule work on those schools. We spoke about, let's see if I can do the right change. We spoke about the HVAC rooftop unit for Nottingham Cafeteria. There was a change order that was put in place that I believe is on the agenda for approval, discussions about the engineering of that change order in the, in the, in the meeting. We also had some questions about the ventilator units at Rice and Reynolds. Those units have yet to be started, we are waiting on, on October 10th, inspection for the gas line from the Hamilton Township Inspection Department. The, we spoke on the generator in Snyder, and the only thing that's left on that particular job at the time of this meeting was the fencing around that generator. The west pool heater was installed, and we were waiting to start up on that. We had, we spoke about this building and the ongoing roof repair in this building, and at the time, there was some rafter rot at the end, you know, the fascia boards, that was being addressed, and a change order was being put in place for that, those added repairs, which were blind at the time when the job was being looked at. Those, those rare roof rafters were not exposed until the fascia boards were removed after the job was started. We knew that there was gonna be some hidden damage somewhere, we just didn't know how extensive it was. So there is a, there was contingency money in the job, and there's gonna be an additional cost on top of the contingency money to make those repairs, and if anybody came into the building, it's obviously done, because all the scaffolding has been removed. We spoke about the Alexander Playground, and the completion date on that was, would be the 18th, today is the 25th, so I'm assuming that's been completed. And the other one was the NJJ punch list from the referendum from, I guess, a year and a half ago. That list has been completed finally, and, let's see. That is, that's about it on that. And I asked for a, a completion date on the majority of the projects, and the speed will respond to it by giving us, giving me a list of completion dates on, say, interior doors, windows, and stuff like that. There's a lot of, there's a lot of 99 and 90% completion status at this time. We, and as everybody knows, it's usually that last 5% that takes the longest to get done, but we, I'm encouraged to see that a lot of this work has been completed, with the exception of the vestibule work and, and some of the window work, which we already knew was going to stretch into, into November and October, so.
Do you have an estimated date on when the last thing they estimate is gonna be done?
The latest date I have here is November 25th, and that's the windows at Reynolds. That's what I have left, unless, unless something has changed instead. That's the latest. Oh, I'm sorry, there's some, I'm sorry, there's some masonry work, some abandoned work at West that's enlisted for 12-1, 19, so that's the list, or the list that we have going at this time. We did discuss about the future work that's going out for next, for next year, and that work is being, is being scheduled to be presented for a bid by, I believe, October 4th. So we have enough time, if, we don't, we don't receive any bids, we have enough time to go out, but one of the problems that we did have was awarding some of this stuff so late, we ran into some, some shipping and receiving of some of the material, and it pushed into the summer months, because some of this stuff, this has a 12 to 16 week delivery date, and when you, when we awarded them, some of the work in April and May, it pushed those dates back. So we're looking to have all this done and awarded, hopefully by January, when the new work is launched, so we have enough time to get, and if there's any shipping delays, we can, we can address those at that time before the projects actually begin, you know, in June. So that's, that's where our goal is at. And if the board has any questions, I'll be really happy to answer them, if I can.
Do you have any questions?
And do I need my, can we give Dr. Boror anything? If I missed anything, I don't think I did, but, that's it. That was for the initiatives, and then we went over the agenda, we had our agenda meeting, sorry, I got. We had our agenda meeting, sorry, I could continue here. We had our agenda meeting on, on the night, on 18th of September, and we discussed, it was a discussion on communications within the district. There was a discussion on the food service analyst position. And I believe that that's on the agenda tonight. Somebody was hired to, to monitor the, the amount of money that's owed to the district and, and help try to collect some of those funds. We discussed the possible, there was a change order that we discussed on the lentils at Greenwood School. When the, when the windows were being installed over Greenwood, they found that some of the lentils over there were sagging. And what I mean by lentils, actually, the header on top of the window, within the concrete structure, the steel support, they found that some of those were sagging a little bit. And they were exposed when the brickwork was removed. So we had got, we had received an original proposal for that work, but for some reason, that proposal has changed a little bit, and that motion has been pulled, and we're going to drop the bid on, I think, we're going to look for other prices. Because that, the original cost to that was a hundred and sixty thousand, it's up over two hundred thousand now for that replacement of those lentils. So we're, we're looking to maybe look elsewhere to, maybe somebody to give us a price on that. And then there was a, there was another issue with the, with the roof here on the administration building, where we, they had some work they had to do up there, and then they exposed some, some brickwork issues with the chimney. And there was, had to be some, some roof flashing and some covering of the brickwork was an option. Resucc slowly was another option, and so there was a, there was a change order on that also. After the exposure, the roof was, was opened up for repairs. And that's, oh, and the, the other one was the HVAC unit at North. Where the only thing that we were waiting on, unless it's thought, is, is the balance report for the air purger system. That's, that's it as far as I have. Any other questions on that? I'll touch on the C and I stuff, I'll let, I'll let them do that.
I think we've covered financial facilities.
You did miss curriculum, so Pam, you want to...
I'm not going to touch you, I'm going to take this thing away from Pam.
Mr. Cankov, if I remember correctly, we're going to wrap the chimney with mesh and then cover it with stuff out.
Yeah, that was one of the options, it was, and I had gone on...
And that's what we decided to do? That's what's our agenda.
Okay, yeah, there was a couple of options, and that's the one we decided on. And the only thing that I had required was that the mesh was, not steel mesh, be stainless steel. Because usually, behind those meshes, it's lots, so stainless will be lots. That was the request that we had.
Alright, first, curriculum instruction, we met twice this month, one for initiatives, and then one for agenda items. During the initiatives meetings, we talked about new teacher orientation, which happened in August at Wilson. I would say it was stopped by one day, which was great. Each day, they were working on a different domain in the Danielson Teacher Practice rubric. And the day that I was there, they were writing postcards to Dr. Rocco, and they were excited to do as new teachers in our district, and maybe they thought that he might like to know or questions they had for him. We had summer professional development workshops. There were forty-three workshops offered with over a hundred and ninety participants. Our gifted and talented this year, we did a different process for identifying students that were eligible. And it really increased the number of our students who made eligibility. Last year, we had forty-five students newly identified, and this year, we rose that, we more than doubled it to a hundred and eleven. Kindergarten enrollment, we were, as of the beginning of the month, we were at seven hundred and ninety-five. I'm sure that's gone up by now. Middle school sports, we're happy that we're going, bringing back some middle school sports this year. I'm going to start with track and cross country for boys and girls at all three middle schools. In response to some community questioning, we discussed the Alexander BD program and different supports and processes that were being put in place to support our students, our teachers, and our school, our community in general. And then we reviewed some policies, especially ones as far as gifts, grants, and donations, and corporate sponsorship, some things that are further down the road, but just ideas we wanted to look into and get some feedback from our attorney as far as what we can do as far as, and we're looking for corporate sponsorship. And then when we met later in the month, what we're going to be asking you guys to approve tonight will be about people's net on district, the board policy on athletic competition for second reading after it's been revised to make sure that it includes from our student, acceptable behavior handbook. We have revised course curriculum for creative writing. We have disposal of textbooks, the ones that are over ten years old will be discarded, and the ones that are less than ten-year-old will be put on our website to be sold. We actually have sold a few. We have some gift donations coming. One exciting one is ten thousand dollars from NJPSA, FBA, a partnership with them for the purpose of attendance and setups. We have, we're going to ask you to approve submission of some grants, some professional travel events, professional service agreements with Miller School for social emotional learning programs, professional agreement for school climate projects. A memorandum of understanding, a partnership with Princeton, Princeton University, where there will be having student teachers come to our school, but then we also will be receiving professional development for our staff members free of charge from Princeton University, which is a pretty cool partnership. Just some student field trip destinations, two confidential settlement agreements, a confidential settlement agreement, confidential HIB decision, and then the overnight field trip that we have annually for our students that do the Key Largo trip from the high schools. Any questions or comments from both on the committee or any board members?
I have a question, so, and I don't know if you can answer me, Mr. Scotto. So the forty-five students were newly identified in eighteen nineteen, and a hundred and eleven newly identified this year. Did I, did I get that correct?
Did I get to answer that? That is correct. So previously, a student had to be recommended, sit and take the cognitive reasoning ability assessment, and we fell with our extensive work that we've been doing with Equity, giving all students access to be considered. We administered the COGAT reasoning assessment to all second grade students last year, and as a result, with that revised measure, which still included teacher recommendation and report card grades, one hundred and eleven students qualified, as opposed to the previous year, under a different model, were only forty-five qualified.
And do you have a ballpark figure of how many students we have in GNT? Just ballpark.
I do, just give me a moment.
Okay.
Just give me a minute to add that up. If you want to move on to the next report, then I can, I couldn't have, but, you know, I always like to check my math, my teacher told me.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for curriculum?
I just want to follow up on that one. So I heard before, Pam, I think I heard you say, the criteria was changed to allow these youngsters in this program.
The criteria to get them in was not changed, the eligibility to take the test was. So they still took the same test, and then they still had to have a report.
When did the Board of Education, must have missed it, when did the Board of Education change the criteria?
We didn't change criteria, it just, more students were given a test. The criteria for eligibility for the program did not change.
Mr. Solentown, why would the board make that decision?
Well, I would think, I would think that when, I would bring, I would think because, well, I may have to defer to the attorney and to the superintendent on this one, because I would think that when changes are made out there, and there's complaints coming to superintendent, well, not what's coming to superintendent, I mean, made, the attorney, a couple of the board members, about the lack of information, I think I would be concerned about that. And I would think that anything that is changed, that this Board of Education has an elected body, has the right to know now before it's implemented. And I don't give a damn what anybody said, that's what I got elected for.
So, this is, this is like when we gave all of our students the opportunity to take the PSATs. Doesn't mean that anybody different is getting it.
But that's not what I understand. I understand that part. What I'm understanding is that the baseline, the baseline to enter or to be considered has changed. And when the baseline changes...
So the, the, the prob, the assessments that we do have not changed, right? The order in which we've given those has changed, which means we've provided an opportunity for all of our students to take the COGAT, which is very neutral, as an entry point to determine if people should, students should go on in the process. Teacher evaluation, grades, all of that is then considered into the process, which has always been part of the process. But the initial part of that was to open the door so that others could get the opportunity to initially do that. Now, initially take the test, right? So the door was open to everybody to initially take the test instead of the test being later on in the process, because it, it opens the door to the possibility of, yes, more students. I might venture to say this, one, there is no change in general, right? In the general operation, other than the order of things have been done. And we're going to talk more about this at a later date. But what's, I just want to finish the one thought. But what is the harm in allowing more students the opportunity to be eligible for gifted and talented? And let's just say, by chance, by chance, there is a student or two in there that maybe is borderline. It's not going to hurt them, it's only going to help them as children, right? I have three children in this district, and one of them qualified for gifted and talented. The other two didn't, right? That's the way the system goes, and I'm okay with that. But at the end of the day, if a child is in there because maybe, maybe it was close, or, or, it's not hurting, because we're enhancing their opportunity. But we are actually, by just, just adjusting the way the process is put in place, we are actually making it a more available opportunity for all of our children in this district. And I think that's, that's a good thing. That's a really good thing, where any child across the district has an open opportunity at step one. And that's a key to it.
So, just to clarify, Bill, the opportunity in, to take the test, you can take it. If you don't, as we can move forward.
Correct, correct, right.
So we're really, we're closing off.
It's not, I mean, it's, it's not a pass or fail, is it? Right, yeah. But, but the only thing is, step one is like, the door is wide open, right? And then, and then we move forward from there with the other criteria that's put in place. I'm simplifying it, I know Mr. Scotto can go into more detail about that. I'm simplifying that process, but at the end of the day, why are we here? We're here to educate children, we're here to provide opportunities for children to grow in lots of different ways. And sometimes, we're here to open a door to a child who maybe didn't get that door open, for whatever reason that was. And you know what? It's, I'm happy, and I'm celebrating the fact that we have over a hundred kids in the gifted program right now. This is wonderful for us.
That is, I understand that part.
You're putting on glass ceiling.
I understand that part, okay? And I wholeheartedly agree with you on that, if you can get more youngsters in there. I think that, I think the baseline is being moved to do this, that's my concern, that's my concern. The bottom line is being moved to accommodate, and that's an issue, because what you've turned the program into, you've turned the program, you've turned the program into an enriched program, or from a, I guess, a Cadillac program into a Chevrolet. And that's got no reflection on the youngsters, and I would agree with you wholeheartedly. If I can get a youngster in there, that is borderline. If I'm the teacher, and my student, let's just say that the baseline is a hundred, and my, and my students got a ninety-seven or ninety-eight, I think that could be worked out. But you can't do it with youngsters that are in at ninety and ninety-one, alright? Because then, that doesn't make any sense. I, I, me personally, I want to see to make, make it worthwhile to get into the program, not a giveaway, okay? And then I think you have, and we already know this, you have an issue with some other things with regards to how things are being, being managed.
Well, and all of which, all of which we've agreed to talk about, but I will say this, I don't think anybody disagrees where making sure that the program is instituted with validity, right? Making sure that the students are getting the most out of the program in that process. We are committed to that, but I think also, from time to time, there's an opportunity to reevaluate programs. And gifted is always one of those programs where there's lots of conversation about it. Are we gifted in the academic end, the creative end, a combination of the two? You know, and so, we're going to be opening that conversation with our ALPS teachers and, and talk to them about that process to, and, but that's, that's for another day.
And I just want to be clear, we're not lowering any standards or anything. The numbers are increasing because we broaden the baseline, the ability for, for the access.
Do you mind if I, Mr. Scotto, to kind of answer that for you?
Very briefly, no worries.
Yes.
It will, it will, it's two parts. And the other thing I thought I'd heard was that it had not been communicated to the board, but I've heard this presentation before, so I know it was done somewhere.
We, we have talked at various stages, either in committee or initiatives and things like that. So, yeah, so, Mr. Scotto, about the, the criteria. Very briefly, sorry.
No, I know you mean the top.
That is correct, the criteria has not changed. It is still a multiple measures approach, meaning different ways that students can qualify for the program. And what we felt consistently was happening was students were not getting the access to be considered, which, from all of the work that we've done in this district, that equity, and students that don't get an opportunity, we felt that every student should deserve that opportunity. What we also did was to educate the parents that every second grade student would have the opportunity, not to be in the program, but to be considered. And any work that we've done, whether it be here or across the state, in providing children with acceleration, is to use the standardized measure first. Because none of us, including myself, are trained in assessing cognitive ability unless we perhaps are a member of the child study team. So for a teacher to assume that a student may be gifted, as opposed to just doing very well academically, those are two different measures. So basically, what we did was we opened the gate as wide as we could for kids to be considered. And in some of our districts, some of our schools, where students may be underserved or may be falling in a different subgroup, to see the number of students go from single-digit to double-digit, having an opportunity to be challenged, is, is an opportunity to celebrate a job well done for our school community.
Number, thank you.
I'm sorry, I have the number. Three oh four.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are any other questions, we're going to move on to the hearing of the public. Agenda items only.
Can we move on to F, can we pretty C? We never had board reports under announcements.
Oh, I'm so sorry, we're going to, you know. Okay, well, how about you go first? You have any...
Thank you, I appreciate that. Just very quickly, I, I was very pleased to attend three back-to-school nights at Mercerville, Morgan, and Reynolds, all extremely well attended, and you had to get your hat in there early to park, because it was impossible to park any of those rotations. I went to school boards meeting on the eighteenth, where we had a meeting on opioids. It was an update on some of the things we learned. There's actually new numbers now coming out, and they're not getting any better. So that was important.
Just to follow up to that real quick, I ran into Mr. Honorferry, and he is committed to the district again to, once we get past November and December, he has a big university, Prosecutor's University in Atlantic City in November. The count, him as the county prosecutor is hosting for all the prosecutors in New Jersey. It's called University of Prosecutors. Once he gets through all that, we're going to meet up with him again, and we plan on doing more presentations... doing more presentations, bringing more awareness, maybe adding a little thing about, you know, get something going about suicide prevention. So, we're on that with ill good because it's not getting any better, right?
Okay. And also, uh, this past weekend, I went to a county workshop, and it was a workshop with the school climate and cultural initiatives. I forwarded a copy of the PowerPoint, the superintendent, uh, Mr. Scotto, and the curriculum committee. But it's very important because it has a lot of items in it which are for the social emotional learning. And hot off the press this week, now available on the NJSA, uh, NJSBA website, is the, uh, it's mental health task force report. It's building a foundation for hope. This is available to anyone that wants to look it up. And it has 71 suggestions, many of which deal with the social emotional learning. So, I think it's important we all take a look at that. Thank you.
Anybody else have any for, before?
Well, I'll dovetail to this because I went to the roll out of the SEL, um, report yesterday. Um, it's, it's very, um, very well researched. My biggest issue with NJSBA all the time is that they live in asylum, and, um, they really don't reach out beyond the educational world. So, they had this magnificent report, and now one psychiatrist was contacted. So, you had this whole big report on suicide and nothing from the psychiatric community was kind of disappointing. That said, Dr. Ederhold gave an amazing talk about where they are and how they got there. And, um, the other good report came out of South Brunswick, um, where they talked about their, um, parent university. They, they've been doing a parent university for like 15 years. But like us, they actually get a better turnout to their presentations, but I think it's partly just the community. But they're also realizing that, you know, they're only hitting like the same 250 people. And Dr. Ederhold, um, suggested possible is a big parent university. So, if you want to go to the parent university at South Brunswick, I have the, um, the dates and stuff. I can scan it or I can give it to Dr. Rocco to scan. We've been invited if we want to go and see what they do. Dr. Ederhold's online. But they're all looking for, forward to like putting stuff online, doing more live stuff. But they talked a lot about mission creep of education and how education is having to do more of what parents used to do, what churches used to do, what the community used to do. Um, and, and that should be a big concern to us. I mean, Dr. Ederhold's got a team of people who are all connected by this app called Gaggle. And if a student signs in with his or her email in the district and says something like, hey, let's go and do drugs tonight, they get hit. It's like a bing. But they're never off. That, I mean, that would be my concern. And, and Dr. Uh, Dr. Rocco told me that we use BARK. It's, it's, yeah, it's different. It's not Gaggle cost money. But, um, it's just really, really an intense kind of situation where the people we are hiring to do education are now doing like social work and, you know, trying to prevent, um, kids from doing goofy things. So, it's a big conversation.
Mr. Boyle, can you do that?
Just clarify what BARK is, so everybody understands.
So, Gaggle, what you're talking about does similar things to what BARK does, but they have live monitoring associated with it. That's why there's a significant cost associated with that program too. BARK identifies anything within G Suite. So, if it's being done on a Google Doc, on a Google Sheet, in a presentation, or inside Gmail, it can flag, uh, what, what we deem or what they deem as inappropriate. Once that gets flagged, we get an email notification. Right now, it's the three of us at the table here, as well as we share it with Marta, depending on what the content is. And then they can share it out with the principals to identify what the follow-up needs to be done after that.
And, and are you guys like on call with BARK after hours, like? Yeah. I, I mean, that was a thing, Dr. Ederhold, is that this live version of Gaggle. I mean, if some child is in distress at 11 o'clock at night, they get called. Um, if...
It sounds like you have talked very simply.
So, there, yeah, with BARK, it has different levels of severity. So, you have ones that are just flagged for being inappropriate, and then you have ones that get flagged as severe, and it'll say it in the email as well. BARK does have a team similar to Gaggle, but they're not as responsive because it is a free product. But if you do not respond within, uh, it's either 24 or 48 hours to severe, BARK will reach out and say, hey, we noticed that this hasn't been reviewed yet. Please take a look at this because this is a severe matter.
Anybody else have any for a report?
Can we do something with vaping to tie that in with opioids? Because the vaping, we're up to eight deaths and 500 people in the hospital in the same month. 10 deaths now?
Yeah, we're going to broaden that a little bit. I mean, it started with that, and I was just thrilled to death, and it took me, I'll be on the board six and a half years since, and that's how long it took to get that done. So, one check. But we have much more to do. I mean, suicide prevention is very, very serious. Depression itself, it's, it's just, it's topics that people don't want to talk about that we, as, as a board, I think, need to talk about and adjust because it's not going to be a shame though. It can happen to anybody, anywhere, anytime. I mean, okay?
Yeah. One more thing just on, uh, BARK. Uh, that is available to the parents as well to get those same notifications if they opt into it. So, it's, it's not just us off hours, the parents can get those same notifications.
But through G Suite, do they have to?
It's, uh, email.
Jim, does our parents know that?
They do sign on.
Yeah, we have, we send a, a letter out with it. We had a, uh, school messenger go out last week.
Is that only if a child's in their school district account? Like, okay.
Yes, we don't monitor anything with personal accounts, just with school.
And Dr. Ederhold said that too. And the interesting thing was, is he said that he believes that the kids who really want help know that they can get around Gaggle by using a non-school address, but they choose to use that address. I mean, he, he got right down to teachers being called by students who were locked in their bathrooms at home who wanted help and reached out through, through their school email address to Gaggle, and it, it got to them. So, um, it's, uh, another thing to look at. And I just want to get into that real quick. Um, I did attend the school boards presentation with Mr. Gasey as well. And when a prosecutor was speaking, all of the, the majority of the things that he talked about that they've already been doing, he used Hamilton as, as the example. And all the other districts are like, oh, wow, how could we have that happen in our district? So, although we still have tons to do, I mean, it sounds like Hamilton is starting to be upfront in that. Um, and he did also bring up the vaping crisis. So, nice to be, go and say hi. I'm from Hamilton. I have to go, oh, wow, that's...
And actually, we were pretty surprised at the turnout. I mean, we were really, he said, out of all the presentations they have done everywhere, the three presentations they did in our district were the most people that, uh, they talked to. And if some of you guys were there, I thought, you know, it was good, very good feedback. Okay, so, does anybody else have any for, or comment? Okay. Any none? Uh, we have the, I'm going to start with Ken because I thought he would.
All right, my first question, um, the middle school sports, the track and field. Where will those kids be practicing? There's no track facilities at any of the middle schools?
We can clarify this, right? So, the, there's going to be cross-country for the running. And the track end of it is going to be shot putting, what else?
Field events only?
There's four, there, right now, we're looking at four events. It's the mile, the 100, the long jump, and the shot put. So, the facilities of the middle schools can house those events there. We're also looking at potential of housing, uh, who are hosting, um, either one track meet at one of the high schools so they can be exposed to the actual facilities, or having a culminating meet at Dennis Park with all three of the middle schools that are there. So, the athletic director, so that everybody's clear, the athletic directors have an integral part in building out what we're doing, including building out what we're doing with the coaches and identifying what would be feasible to work at the middle school sites, with the understanding that getting kids to the high school and using the high school facility would be, uh, would be feasible to, at this point.
All right. So, as we get into this and it becomes popular and we start expanding it, does this mean we're going to need to hire athletic directors at all three middle schools?
Uh, we're not even started, so I'm not even going to be able to answer that at this point. We've got a long way to go before that. This, it was, it was not in place for 10 years. And before it was, um, 11 years ago and before, my understanding is there were no athletic directors at the middle schools.
So, who oversees the athletics?
At that point, I believe the VPs did, the school administrators.
Well, I think that, that our athletic directors have input on...
Absolutely. Yeah.
So, they're kind of helping out there.
They are. But you're talking about overseeing like we had at the high school, the athletic directors. My understanding is 11 years ago and before, it was the administration at the middle schools that had oversight and talked, probably Mr. Gata probably was involved in that.
Yes, it was, um, except at the high school level, but the middle school, um, is basically, um, is controlling the athletic program. We had those.
Okay, for the, um, a couple of questions about the esports. Um, do we have advisors chosen for that? And what does the ED pay for that? EDP pay for that?
I don't think...
It hasn't been, it hasn't been discussed in further. So, it will be comparable to what the contract says, and we will be working with HDBA to make sure it's on.
Okay. Uh, the referendum work, um, it's my understanding that Spiesel, the architect, oversees all the work. Is that correct? Or do we have a general contractor that oversees everything?
We have a, uh, that makes this a call, a project manager.
Go to project manager?
Yes.
And how many of the contractors are signatory to a labor union versus non-union and just paying their employees prevailing wage?
As far as I know, the limited work that's gone over right now, they're non-signatory, but they're getting prevailing wage.
So, they're non-union?
Correct.
And the HVAC contractor at Nottingham?
Sunnyfield is a, uh, signatory contractor, I know that.
To local nine?
Uh, I believe there are three points, so it's out there.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any of the L sign up or...
Hi, Ron.
Remember, the first one is on agenda items only.
Yes.
Good, okay.
Jason McShane, 23, North and Ab. Um, first, I want to thank the esports presentation because I'm, esports, uh, made my life kind of growing up, and I really appreciate getting the chance to, uh, allow people who feel that's the way that they express themselves and, and coordinate with their friends. I know I went home after high school every day to get an appearance, just both my friends. And I think this is a great opportunity for that. Um, one question I have is, is it being funded directly from budget, or is there a, a responsibility for the participants?
It's probably, like, no parent responsibility.
Fantastic. Um, and second, I'd love to applaud you on increasing the equity with the access to the JNT. Uh, I think that's incredibly important. Uh, one question I have is, are there other entry points to the JNT system for JNT track? Other than second grade?
Uh, just to find entry point, you mean how a student is considered?
Correct, yes.
So, in second grade, we're giving every student the opportunity. Everyone gets an access to the entry point, that's the gateway piece. Uh, currently in third grade, moving into fourth and fourth and fifth, because I, we felt that time needed to be given to the district, to the community to kind of understand the change. Um, the, uh, students that are in the upper grades per se of, of elementary school are working under the more previous dated model where it had to be a teacher that had to decide the students that sit for the COGAT. Our goal over the next few years is to take that equity piece and spread it of, uh, for students rising into third, into fourth, and into fifth.
Great. I really appreciate that.
I answered your question on that.
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you so much. Um, I think it's incredibly important that we at least make that possible as soon as possible, um, ensuring that everyone has the same chance to enter the JNT program. Um, I, I know myself, I was identified by a teacher when I was in 11th grade. So, I've gone through from K to 11, and then one of my teachers said, oh, you're really creative, right? Why aren't you not in honors English? And, um, no one ever gave you the chance.
Just to call, to clarify also, we continue to still have our accelerated programs in middle school and in high school and consider students every single year.
Fantastic.
Uh, last, uh, two years ago, we also changed the way that students are considered for accelerated math in ELA, exiting elementary school, where all families were given the opportunity to have their child be considered to sit for a placement test as opposed to a more traditional teacher rec. So, we have put some other measures in place.
That was an optional, the, the families had to opt into that?
What we did was, we felt that all students should be given the opportunity to sit for the placement test, to be considered from fifth and to sixth grade for math and ELA accelerated courses. Um, whereas a, a previous model, uh, prior to many of us working here, was, again, began with teacher recommendation. So, um, we have over the last two years had more students sit for the placement test. That doesn't necessarily mean every student is placed in the accelerated program, but at least given the equitable access to be considered at step one.
Great. I applaud that. Thank you so much.
I also just want to make, I want to make one comment also, is you'll see in the infographic, and we put it out as a press release with the, uh, AP scores. We had a, a large increase in the number of students taking AP tests because we are paying for it. And thank you to the Board of Education for that. We really appreciate that. But the other key piece to this is more kids are taking the classes, but more kids are also scoring higher on the exams. Like, it's, it's not more kids are there and they're just sitting in class. 79% of, 79% increase over the last four years of kids getting threes and higher on their AP exams. And a three is the baseline for getting college credit. So, so it's not just opening the door to more kids being in the, the classes. They're actually performing in those classes and getting the scores so that they can get college credit or be successful outside of school. So, it's a twofold process, and, and both pieces are moving, maybe at different rates, but they are moving.
Dr. Rocco, doesn't the research show that when you put kids, you know, as Mr. Solentana referred before, you know, the kids in the 90s with kids who were in 97, 98, the 97, 98 pull those kids up?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of research that says, and it, it goes back to the old argument, if you set high expectations for kids, they're going to reach those expectations. If you set your expectations lower, they're going to reach those expectations, right? So, we're setting our expectations higher, and we're opening the door for more students to do more advanced work or the opportunity to try to do more advanced work, whether it's through gifted and talented, or it's through honors and AP classes. But, but we're opening that door, and with success.
Okay. I'm going to close that public comment.
I just found out Sunnyfield is a central tourist contractor, a third signatory at night.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have Pam. Can you take us through the curriculum instruction?
Sure. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, I moved non-roll call items out of curriculum instruction, numbers one and four through 14.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for, if I take that?
Question, comment, discussion, important?
Um, just a comment. So, for, um, I remember five for gift donations. We have, um, several gift donations that were given to our schools and, you know, between supplies, backpacks, you know, equipment, things like that. And I just want to thank everyone that donated because it is a huge help for our students in our schools. And, um, you know, we welcome it, and we thank you very much.
Yeah, it's a good point. And all of the, for the community, which has had a whole ton of, of...
I just like it, like to give some recognition to the people that did donate.
Yeah, just so the public knows, I, we, as Ms. Lord said, we, we get a lot of donations from a lot of great organizations. Um, we have, um, Clockner Elementary School got $950 for school supplies. Um, we have $1,500 from an individual for backpacks for our elementary schools, $2,200 for our PE department from, you went, yeah, okay, so, no more. Okay. So, so AAA gave the $950. Uh, Michelle Pralaga, Families and Friends, gave $1,500 for... Okay, so, so AAA gave the nine hundred and fifty dollars, uh, Michelle Perlaga, Families and Friends, gave fifteen hundred for backpacks. Uh, Pediatric Medicine, Dr. Tolling gave two thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars for fifty-eight CPR anytime kits to help train our students and staff in CPR. Uh, we've got a thousand dollars from Patient First to Robinson Elementary School for books for students, three thousand dollars for Steiner for educational materials for Italian education from the Italian-American Committee, ten thousand dollars from New Jersey Principals and Supervisors for All Kids Thrive to the District for attendance incentives. Uh, the Rovere Club of Robinson and Hamilton gave Wilson two thousand eighty-five dollars for backpacks and school supplies. Crystal Mother Squid gave, uh, the District Science, nine through twelve, miscellaneous science supplies, including small lab equipment. I'm not even gonna read it, some of the science stuff, I can't even pronounce the word, fifteen hundred dollars, I'll be honest about that.
That would be centrifuges and electroharassers, I don't...
And the last one is what I was...
Electroharassers.
Yeah, exactly what you said. Uh, North, uh, actually Field Hockey Program got a shed from the Fireman's Mutual Benevolent Association worth a thousand dollars, and I think that's awesome. So I wanna thank all of them for all of those donations to our school district, and they deserve that recognition.
Okay, Pam, does anything else, Ms. Thornton? Anybody else before we call vote? Good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion's passed.
Alright, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, I move CNI items for roll call numbers two and three.
Anybody have any?
Uh, yes, I wanna thank Mr. Scotto, he's brought in now a creative writing class for eleventh and twelfth graders. You have been just a tireless, um, worker in terms of beefing up the curriculum, uh, in all sorts of ways, and I for one really appreciate it, and I appreciate you reading all my, my notes.
Mr. Carnally?
Yes.
Mr. Salantana?
Yes.
Dr. Perron?
Yes.
Mr. Gacy?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Kenka?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Thornton?
Yes.
Ms. Lombardo?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Mr. Kenka, Finance and Operations, you wanna take us through it?
On recommendation of the superintendent, I move non-roll call items for Finance and Operations, from eight, ten through thirteen, and fifteen. Second.
Okay, anybody on your side, I think we reached the very end of that process.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion's passed.
On recommendation of the superintendent, I move roll call items for Finance and Operations, number nine.
Second.
No questions?
And on the second.
Good.
Mr. Carnally?
Yes.
Mr. Salantana?
Yes.
Dr. Perron?
Yes.
Mr. Gacy?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Kenka?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Thornton?
Yes.
Lombardo?
Uh, yes, but for motion five, gift donation, the last one on the list, I'm gonna abstain from. Not that I have to, but I'm just...
Are you placing either the double or the double?
Yeah, right. Okay, Mr. Salantana, you're on.
Under Personnel, I move Personnel Items, one B one through one X four and two through thirteen, roll call.
Uh, Mr. Kerrig, would it be B two?
I'm sorry.
No, no, you...
I put that in one B one.
You did say one B one.
One B one.
No, B one. Do we have to...
It's one B one.
Okay, so we have to, we have to do that even though the...
A is, A is, okay.
No, but B one.
The name was removed.
Yeah, so do we have to?
We know that.
Okay.
So one, two, one, D, proof.
Got it.
Second.
Oh, anybody have any comments or discussions on personnel items?
Oh, I do. Retiring. We have, uh, two this month. It's like, National Ed, um, twenty years in district from Reynolds, and a school nurse from Cooser, twenty years. We thank them for all their service, wish them luck on their retirement.
Does anybody else say it? James Sattler.
Mr. Carnally?
Yes.
Mr. Salantana?
Yes.
Dr. Perron?
Yes.
Mr. Gacy?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Kenka?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Thornton?
Yes, I abstain on motion three, I, one thirty-four.
Ms. Lombardo?
Um, yes, motion, I abstain on motion I, numbers fifty-seven and sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight?
Sixty-eight. Fifty-seven and sixty-eight, motion thirty-I, yes. Okay, moving on to... Do we have any other business in the board?
I have something, hold on, hold on. Um, I, I'd like to mention this, but when we were talking about the esports thing, um, we actually have a Steiner graduate who plays professional esports for Rainbow Six. All kind of things, I was up there, yeah, his name's Kevin, he graduated the year before me, and, uh, he got signed to his team in twenty sixteen, he's on contract with them, so he's salaried and everything. Uh, since he joined in twenty sixteen, he's won forty-four thousand in tournament winnings, uh, and that's, that's just his tournament winnings, not his salary and not his straight money, so, I mean, it's, it's, there's Steiner kids coming out there.
Does Kevin have a last name?
Skakowski.
How does one, does...
It's easier to find him by, uh, easily, easily is his, is his free name. Easily with two Y's.
How does one end up as a full-time employee what they recruit on? How does it become a full-time employee?
It's just like, um, a professional sports team, like in the NFL or anything, they, they're under contract for a certain amount of years, and it's all about the contract.
Because he's that good.
They have a union?
Not yet.
They actually, no.
They're actually going, it's been making a lot of problems, actually.
They got career barriers. Okay, anybody else have anything?
Yes, uh, Madam President, um, as you know, we currently, um, meet for agenda items in a committee format, and several months ago, Mr. Gacy proposed that we change and move to a full public agenda format. Um, and at the time, I was new, didn't understand the difference between one and the other, although I had gotten the instructions of how it works and so on. Um, so it's been a few months, and I've had an opportunity to participate in this, in the committee format. Um, and while it does have some pros to it, uh, in terms of how it functions, uh, the cons, I think outweighed, and I think it's, um, more beneficial to the board as a whole if we meet as a full board and discuss all items as a whole committee, uh, excuse me, as a whole board, as opposed to separate committees, and then having to read minutes from each committee and hope you understand uh, how the discussion was formulated and so on. Um, so therefore, uh, I, I think, you know, for my, just from what I've observed in the last couple of months, I think it would be better if we moved that, or I don't know if it's ever been done, but moved to a full, um, agenda review committee format, uh, in the public. So my, 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 when we do that, um, it's completely effective, I'm over. Second.
Mr. Kerrig, do I understand correctly... No, don't interrupt me, please.
I was gonna ask Mr. Kerrig something before anybody says anything.
There is a process.
Yeah, okay. We voted this down twice, have we not, and so are we done for the year?
And just add, at the time, as I mentioned, at the time, I abstained, um, and as I understand it, and as I understood it fine, but prior to me abstaining, I was informed that I could revisit this.
And that's what, both questions, is why I just...
Accurate, Patrick.
For our, um, first...
Consider maybe made only by a member promoted on the prevailing side, the original vote, and, and abstention is impacting the essence of the project.
So, where are we at now, here, here's a second.
So I guess we have to question.
Just to be clear...
Let's just be clear, one question, Patrick, if this gets brought up now, if it's decided come, and we change it, it can't be even addressed for a minute, right?
No, okay.
Okay?
Yes, means another board, it, it could be done next month, next meeting. President is on the losing side of the motion, not coming up. So we're gonna switch sides.
I just wanna clarify, so, the losing side of the motion is, I'm just gonna go with the side that's bringing it up now, so let's just say, yeah.
Losing side of the motion last time was the side that sought to go back to, to public.
So now the other teams, now they bring it up again, and what happens?
You're saying that, Mr. Hall?
No, it wasn't on...
I know, so you can bring it up, I understand. I'm hoping that what happens after this vote, we can keep doing this every month back and forth?
Well, but in January, the board reorganizes, and we can change that.
Yes.
But according to Patrick, we can do it every month.
Yeah, I heard that.
So, Mr. Gacy?
No, I just, I just wanna be clear that we're gonna maintain our initiative meeting.
Correct.
And then for our agenda meeting, that would be published, and then, so it would be like first, let's say, the first Wednesday's initiative, second Wednesday's agenda, and then the fourth would be the public meeting we're having.
Correct, much like we've already changed to, uh, we have the agenda, we have the initiative, agenda, now the public, that agenda would be a...
You know, Mr. Paul, I don't really understand your frustration, so if you can make it clear to me, please.
Yeah, it's not a frustration at all, yeah, I don't have a frustration.
Well, then why are you moving to change it?
No, no.
Then why are you moving to change it if you have a question?
He doesn't have to explain that long, he really wants to.
No, that's fine, I think I did, I think I said that, uh, after having observed it, I think there's a, a breakdown in communications that's, uh, happens each time. Um, in fact, each committee is presented, um, items in a different context from one committee to the next. Um, there are a number of different reasons, I think, I think that the cons of this arrangement outweighs the pros. I think there are some, there are some, you know, benefits to the way we do it, because it's a smaller group, you have a, you know, you can have a little bit more, uh, discussion, but I think overall, I think if we can just all participate in full discussion, right now, I feel like a one-third board member. I feel like I participated one-third of all of our discussions, I hear about everything else, I read about everything else, and I don't get to have full conversation and exchange with, just as we're having now. And I think it'll, um, you know, I, I hope it'll work, I mean, if not, listen, we just heard, we can revisit and, 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 uh, see what happens next, but I think, uh, at this point, that's my feeling, and I presume it.
Madam President, I have to agree with Angelo, probably for other reasons too, and Al, you should know, and Dana, you should know, and Amy, you should know, and Richard, they're all on the board when we had the regular agenda meeting, and at those agenda meetings, okay, nine members participated in anything and any, everything, even though I may have brought something up through, and we didn't have what we called review. We had committees that specifically handled, um, there was only a few of them, I think it was, um, uh, buildings and grounds or something like that, and maybe technology, okay? That's still, that still should happen, you, you shouldn't have any more meetings, okay, unless you need to have that as an initiative, but those initiatives could be brought up at that agenda meeting also, so you don't have to worry about that. Okay, an example is tonight, when I, when, when we got into the, um, the GNT, which is really out of system GNT, and let me, let me make this clear, I'll put every youngster in this township in a gifted program or an accelerated program, if I can, there's other issues that I could have asked at a public meeting when all nine board members, eight more board members and myself were here, okay, but I can't do that now. And you know I've been frustrated, but, um, longer than he has, okay? And Ms. Thornton and I, we probably, uh, I'll, I'll put it on, we probably took the lead, well, at least I did, when we went to this committee system, and Ms. Thornton said, and I'll, right alongside me, we can go back to it if we, if it doesn't work, and in my mind, it doesn't work, okay? Because, hold on, because, why it doesn't work is because, exactly what Angelo said, I'm on one-third of, I don't, I didn't, I don't know what you are guaranteeing, I should say guarantee, what you are talking about in curriculum, I'm getting it in minutes, just like, I, I know a little bit more about, um, the facilities, because I was there before, but the fact of the matter is, isn't it just like tonight? We talk about it, okay, we decide, sell your point, okay? But right now, it seems as if, and I don't, and if you, you, um, chair people take this, uh, in the wrong way, it seems like, that it comes from one committee through the chair, and the board just sits back and buys into it, unless we find out something from the public that doesn't work. And I'm sick and tired of having to go through fifty phone calls, emails, text messages, as to what's going on in the district based on what we do or don't do.
Okay, I, I think we just need to, does anybody else have any? Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment regarding what Mr. Salantana said. When you said that if we had had an agenda meeting, you could have discussed that topic, but you didn't feel like you could discuss it now, you absolutely could discuss it at this meeting.
Well, I, I think that through the attorney...
I'm gonna have to stop it, because we can go around the table, and every one of us is gonna have an explanation for why we feel one way or the other, so we can't just try and convince each other it's like we didn't last time, so... I think the only thing that we're gonna have to do is vote, see how it goes, I personally don't care which way we do it, I'm saying that in public. Out, and it's not, I don't know if it's gonna matter or not, but, because I don't know how the vote's gonna go, I didn't know this was gonna be brought up tonight, and it's true that we're gonna have at least one new board member on, uh, given in November, so that's, that's one thing. If, uh, every, I mean, January, actually, November, whatever. So, Mr. Hall brought it up, he voiced his opinion, does anybody else have any opinion, not debate, but opinions that they like to bring out, before we have a vote? Mr. Gacy, we heard from you, Ms. Thornton?
Um, just to clarify from what Mr. Salantana was saying, um, I was on the board when the board decided to move towards, uh, the committee system, and at that time, I will be a hundred percent honest, I was a little skeptical. Something new has changed, and I did say, as Mr. Salantana said, okay, well, it was an agreement, a, a discussion, if it doesn't work, we can always go back to it, um, the other way. I personally prefer the agenda meeting and the business meeting, that is just my personal opinion. Um, I've experienced them both, and that, again, is just mine.
So I think what I hear is, a Ms. Lombardo calling for a vote? Any other questions?
Roll call? Not on this.
I don't, after words, Terry, anything you wanna say?
I would just like you all to think about the work that we are now going to put on the staff to be in a meeting where the conversations might be never ending. And you know, Mr. Salantana, you're on your way out the door.
Am I? Don't be afraid to work.
You chose to leave.
The words you used out the door are not appropriate, okay? I'm leading the board because I chose to lead the board.
Okay, well...
All right, let's, let's, let's...
But you're, but you're going to impact while you're on your way out.
I'll have a bigger voice when I'm off this board.
I can't wait.
Okay, I can't wait.
Oh, okay, listen.
Whoa, that's inappropriate.
Let, let's pull ourselves together. I mean, as the attorney said, next month we can go back, and then the next month we can go back, but I think this is, that we, if we're gonna do it, we need to give it a try and not do this every other month.
That's up to your board members.
Anyway, Mr. Gasek.
I'd just like to say, every time I brought this up in Moss, the sun came up the next day anyway, so whatever happens, the sun will come up tomorrow.
Exactly. They can vote.
Okay, if I see the attorney, I'm gonna be bringing it up then. Depending on how this vote goes, if it remains the way it is, then we won't have an issue. If it doesn't, then we, it's almost impossible to start this in October. Two reasons why, we need to sync our calendars like right now to second, but also, when it would be to get two in, everybody's gonna be at the NJ SBA convention the third week in October. So I would, I am requesting that if this is to go to two meetings, that we don't start it possibly in November, so that we can get this a little bit more organized.
I was gonna make that, sorry.
There's a lot that is gonna, it's not just as easy as, okay, we're gonna have two meetings and then the calendars are gonna have to be switched, initiatives have to be switched, committees all have to be switched.
So the motion is revised effective November, she doesn't. Comment that you made on that?
Yes.
Well, throwing up the NJ SBA conference, uh, November is another short month for us.
I just mentioned.
Because, uh-
Thanksgiving.
Teacher, Thanksgiving, uh, we have, there's a week off, the second, first or second week of November, uh, plus you got Thanksgiving, you know, that Thursday, and we usually jump around, you know, that meeting day to a Monday, so, you know.
Madam, uh, President, I'd like to revise it and go back to October, change the date, figure it out. I'd like to combine the, the, the data initiatives or something, but if we're, you know, it just needs to happen.
It's gotta happen, yeah, I think we're gonna, we're playing games out.
We're gonna start looking at schedules and so on before we can figure out. Yeah, yeah.
Then I, I would, as far as-
Right, initiative.
I would request that we give it till November, that we need to-
I said we can do it.
We need a month, I think you're out.
You can't push it out further than that.
We, we can't sit here and, and now figure out how we're doing this.
Well, there is a amendment.
Let's, can we take a vote first before we even have to worry about this?
Yeah, there is a, right.
I mean, we are, we are entering the craziest time of the year, let's be serious.
It's okay, we don't want to go into stuff.
So if any motion is made in a meeting, eh, pardon, have any motions here?
I will go amend the motion, make it effective November.
No, sir, November meeting, okay, we're good. If you got-
No, no, it's roll call, is it?
Any amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
No, it has to be a roll call.
Amendment.
It's just the amendment.
Are we gonna have a question, are we gonna have a question on the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, question on the amendment.
I just wanna say, um, there's really not gonna be any difference with the staff, they're here during the, uh, the committee portion anyway, they're already killed by four, it's seven o'clock anyway.
Right.
There's no, nothing on them, the only thing is gonna be the committee members, we're gonna go from, uh, from an hour and a half to probably six hours of being here. Because I've been on both ends of this, I've been on the ends where we had committees, and I've been on the end where we had the board, and sometimes we didn't get out of here till midnight for the agenda review. Uh, the, the, the regular meeting isn't as intense as agenda review, because there's a lot more questions during the agenda review, and I've been here one, you know, twelve, one o'clock in the morning.
Oh, yeah. And the staff will be here too.
And the staff will be here too, so I just wanna make that clear.
Pressure paid for, please.
And the attorney, who's cost money.
But that's my view. So whoever the board does-
Not that I don't like to pay you.
Okay.
Can we?
I'll be here whenever, whatever you pay for it. Thank you.
Mr. Gasek.
I think one thing that Rich should think about is the fact that, well, we had this before, we had thirteen committees, and that's why when we had our, our agenda reviews, we had so many committees. Now we, we have it broken down and we have three, for initiatives, we only have three committees, I think it makes it a lot more streamlined, I think it's gonna make it a lot different, and I thought it would work when I brought it up, I think it'll work now.
Personnel can't be done though, correct, at agenda, so it's only, okay, this is back to the debate of the year, so we really need to-
Name of the order, I might not even-
Wait, it was a question, we can't do personnel and-
I don't do, okay, but we don't do personnel out here either, so.
Right, but what I'm saying is, is that with the personnel committee then meet?
That's our initiatives committee, we still meet, because it'll still meet, because then, but when you say, if they have an agenda meeting as well.
You don't matter, you only need to have an initiative meeting or something different going to come up, anything other than that, I would, we never had that before.
No, 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 I don't think the question is agenda, I think it's about, I mean, initiatives, I think it's about the agenda, but I thought I understood that we'd go to executive session.
If it's personnel, you had to, you had to.
Yeah.
But you can talk about personnel, you just can't use names or identify anybody in any current way.
I'm not talking about initiatives, I'm talking about the personnel agenda.
Agenda, you go to executive session if you have to.
That's it, when the board previously had two meetings, an agenda and public session, it did not raise fifty people to go in there and discuss fifty, so that was not how it-
But we still-
Just you bring up things, you can't allude to, let's say, the principal of, because you already know who that is. There are things you can't say.
It's highly restricted, you cannot discuss personnel items.
You should have on a lot of meetings, you should know that.
Whatever we spoke about-
That's why I just said, we cannot talk about personnel items in-
What you asked, that I thought-
In public session.
We move to executive session.
Hold the vote, man, I'm getting tired of here.
Yeah.
All in favor of the motion to amend?
Yes, aye, whatever you want.
Oppose, abstain? Well, to amend that it's effective November, that's class.
I'll abstain, Ms. Atwood.
That was to take the vote?
No, that was to amend.
Just for the event.
Ready for that?
Yes.
Mr. Card alley?
Yes.
Mr. Salantana?
Let me think of that, yes.
Dr. Burrow?
No.
Mr. Gasek?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Panca?
No.
Ms. Kelly?
No.
Ms. Thornton?
Yes.
Ms. Lombardo?
Abstain.
Motion passes.
Now, I will have to say that I will leave all the needs of that that I've done and figure out how we do it.
Need, need help, give me a buzz, give anyone else, because I've been there before.
We all need help, I, I've taken the agenda and, you know.
That was thirty-five years in the agenda meetings, I think that was-
Initiative will still continue, so.
Yes.
Right now, we have a public hearing on, is there no other, other business?
I'll be here.
Do we have anybody signed up?
I'm free.
Nope.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
That's just you.
Yes.
Kudos to Mr. Hall, um, we elect, as a public, we elect nine members to this board, they all should be involved in every facet of every operation of this board. I don't understand why there would only be three people and you would have six working off notes, there's no way you get the full essence of a meeting by reading the notes. It's preposterous that all nine members are not involved in every facet, I just wanna say thank you for that, and, uh, my other thing, um, you talked about the donations. As a football program at West, we have received many donations recently by local businesses, in addition to all the businesses that have donated to all the other schools in our district. We need to advertise these businesses to keep them coming back, so can we put their sign, can we put their business names on signs around our athletic fields?
We're working on a policy.
What is our policy now?
That we would have to be tied in with the football board, and we're working on what value that is. If you're getting donations as a football team, they have to be approved by the board based on the amount of money that you are-
I'm not talking cash donations, I'm talking, it's like food donations.
That's what I was just gonna ask, if you're getting all these donations from the board.
There's a value.
There's a value associated with it.
I understand that, uh, the value-
I think you mean, and I'll, I, I can't imagine, it means like if you're at-
I'm talking about a business donating seventy sandwiches to feed our kids before a game, I'm not gonna, giving us a check for ten thousand dollars, absolutely not. Or another business donating a tray of pasta for a pre-game meal.
It still has to be filed as a donation.
So the board has policy to deal with corporate sponsorships, and has considered corporate sponsorship, and our survey laws that apply to have the board accept corporate sponsorships and then-
Did the board respond to the kids' parents when they encountered one of those?
Maybe it has to go to the parent.
If the kid is playing football.
Yeah, I can say, I have a meeting with Mr. Scott, I'm actually on Friday, I can say, well.
Okay, so wait a minute, you're telling me that from now on, we have to come to the board every time a business wants to feed our kids, is that, is that what you're telling me?
No, it's not that, it's not just that, though, because it's, it's bigger than that, since in your initial question referred to, well, how do we promote these businesses here when they do something nice for us through donations?
Let me change, instead of promote, how do we thank these businesses?
Through promotion, which is recommended.
So just to bring up, as a, as a board member and as someone that knows, you know, sort of Ms. Thornton, and anybody else at this table that had kids that went from school. Every one of our schools, at some point or another, gets water donated, food donated, chips donated, tests donated, during testing, we get bottled water. And how in the world are we gonna, in every single little donation of bottled water during testing, we're gonna have to prove that, so we seriously need to look at this then, because that's, that's a little bit, I think we should just-
The issue is that at some point there is a, is a line, and you have to be careful about crossing that line, and so companies do things that are promotional products because they are pre-advertising, it's shoes then, or they drink the water, or they eat sandwiches. And so that's pre-advertising for them, just for that donation, at some point though, it gets bigger and bigger than that, what if they donated shoes? What if there's a value to the board of education for the donation of sneakers or shoes, there are school districts, there are Reebok school districts, or Nike school districts, or Jizz school districts, there is a value to those companies who have that, that the board has to address how it's gonna determine that, that actually, in certain types of corporate sponsors, you have to go through the public committee process, there's a special term called concession, and to grant a concession to an organization, you have to actually go through the committee process, and then you have to have a support approval, and support parameters on certain types of concessions, and so that's-
If somebody is donating this stuff to like a booster club?
Between a corporate sponsor and a business that donates food to a program.
But if the business is donating food to the program every week, Mr. Carrick, isn't there like a dollar, like a thousand dollar?
But the, so if any comes back?
Let me make a suggestion, let John reach out to us, because if we're donating it to the rest of the public, we leave that to different entities in itself, correct?
There's differences there, many donations to school districts cannot be, uh, cannot be set by, well, this is going to this, board of education decides that. Now, the board of education typically-
Is that monetary as well as, sorry, roughly, is that monetary as well, anything else?
Yes, so for example, somebody showed up and said, I wanna donate a million dollars to get all kinds of new sports equipment over at Nottingham High School, they cannot condition that donation, uh, and say, it only can go to a sports facility, not a high school. They can give a million dollars, and the board of education, if we could have a response to that.
Can they give an example to all of those, do you think of the title of this thing?
Boosted clubs, though, are the same thing, they donate to the board of education, the board of education, if they really goes along with what they're donating for, but it's not required to be-
My, if, if somebody, that's just you, talk about the program, they donate, and they, the football, if they did. And that, how, let us, let us talk, let John, you know.
We'd have to do, I think, more than John, every, not the person who had the stuff.
What was the question about donations or about sponsorship?
My question is about donations, how do we thank these, these businesses that are constantly donating, we say thank you and that's it, I don't think that's enough.
Well, we're working on a policy associated with donations that get something on a bench, or schooling, and things like that, we are working on that, I think, and brought that forward to, to each of the committees where you can talk about, but this is a little bit of a different thing, let, let us talk with Gasek about this.
And we, and we focused on soliciting business owners who are alumni of the school, alumni of the township, alumni of the program.
So it doesn't matter.
Figure it out.
All right.
Dana Shiner, Liberty Street, um, I have two things, one, I do wanna thank the board for the vote that you guys did tonight, and thank you, Mr. Hall, for bringing it back up again, because as a member of the public coming and listening to committee reports, it's hard to sometimes know when you say, we discussed, we discussed, we discussed, but we as the public don't know what's being discussed, and sometimes hearing discussions back and forth, we get a better understanding of what's being done and why it's being done. Second, um, for the esports, if it's approved, are you going to be looking for members from the community to serve as, um, advisors or only, only, um, teachers?
So honestly, I think we have lots of staff that are interested, there's actually multiple staff members that have come up to be a regular, some people who work, so we, we must have.
Okay, because I, I know some people who play professionally as well, that I could possibly help, uh, bring in the coaching.
Well, we would love to come in as a guest, and help our, our students, we actually have more staff, University of Baltimore, is a ranked gamer too, is gonna come in and talk, so we would appreciate that. What we do is, it's a big reply staff that are interested.
I, I play part of an Overwatch league. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Anybody else propose or anything they'd like to, that didn't sign up, in closing that portion of the meeting, can I get a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
Say.